I'll take a roll call for the open workshop, August 23rd, 2017. It is 6:15 AM. Trustee Cruden is here. Trustee Desmond is making it in the room. Nice to see you trustee. Sorry about your, uh...
No, I can tell myself.
Your shirt? Okay. I know you hurt yourself.
What did you do, have you fired me or what?
Trustee Finnerty is absent. Trustee Garilic is absent. Trustee Lwande is here. Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan's here. Vice President Wilbath here. And President Roberts is here. At this time, we're gonna start with a presentation. And I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Director Figo. Tom Figo is here. And he'll make the...
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone again. Just to recap why we're here. We want to talk about our E-Rate program that we need to make a decision on moving forward and purchasing end-of-life equipment for our network around our campuses. And we want to also discuss our Chromebook refresh. Just to recap with everyone, back in June, we presented this to the Finance Committee in the conference room just to go over our E-Rate proposal. We do have Vince LaForsia, who is from E-Rate Consultant, who does work for our district in making sure our paperwork is in, everything is done the right way accordingly, so we could get monies back based on E-Rate. I'm not gonna rehash E-Rate again, because we did it at Finance. I will ask Vince to come up to give a little background on where we are, what we want to do, where we're going, and to talk about the program. After Vince is done, it'll be dismissed. And then we could talk about the Chromebook initiative on how we want to refresh our end-of-life devices that we need to seriously look at to make sure students have devices in their hands as we move forward. Vince?
Hello, everyone. How you doing? So just a little background, I've been working with the district mostly since 2004. Couple of years, I wasn't part of it, but for the most part, I've been helping you guys get federal funds since then. E-Rate basically, sorry. E-Rate's a federal program that gives a reimbursement for certain technology needs, like internet access, connections between buildings. And recently, they started funding Wi-Fi access points and switches to help the students get onto, you know, the internet, right? So over the last couple of years through that process, it's based on your free and used lunch account. The district now is eligible for an 80% reimbursement on specific projects. We worked, you know, with the technology team to see what needed to be upgraded. And frankly, there was a lot of older equipment without the district that hadn't been upgraded in six years, seven years. We went out, we solicited pricing on that. Through the E-Rate process, it's a federal bidding process. We awarded bidders that would eventually, if funded, get the project. So right now, we're at the point where we've asked, we have about $1.1 million in federal funds that we've asked for, that we have to work through the application process. In order to use that money, the district would have to come up with about $340,000. And then we'd get a $1.1 million match to purchase that equipment and upgrade, you know, the entire district's network. So we're at the process right now. We're kind of just waiting on the district to decide if you want to move forward with it. And if you do, we're gonna go get that money from the federal government, and then you can, you know, go ahead and do the project.
If there's any questions towards that.
Just to reconfirm the numbers, 340?
Right as it stands, 340,000 is the district's match. 1,117,000 would be the federal government's match.
Again, this is our Chromebook initiative. We did bring this up. Please, should we seal? Dr. Wonko with you. Just to go over where we are as a district and where we need to go. And just to explain what we have here. On the top left, we have 2016, 2017 numbers for K through 8. And then we have projected student numbers for 2017 through 2018. And what we need to do as... You may have just moved that up and down a little bit. What we need to do as a district is look at our devices on hand, understand that we have 8,000 devices that are end-of-life, which means they're no longer covered in the warranty, and they're more expensive to fix than they are to just replace at this point. So we looked at our options. Last year, we were K through 12, one-to-one. K1 had flip Chromebooks, I'm sorry, kindergarten had flip Chromebooks, which they weren't really able to type, so we had a flip Chromebook, which is a touchscreen. They were able to use that one-to-one base in the kindergarten classroom. Understanding our financial concerns, obviously, we needed to make this work to the district advantage and limit the amount of Chromebooks that we would need to purchase to replace end-of-life. So on the right-hand side, we have the flip options, no take-home, no transfers. All we did was ran numbers with plans. Grade K, grade 1, and grade 2, the plan that really works for us is to make K1 and 2 a center-based classroom, whereas every student would not have a device one-to-one. Grades K and 1 would keep five of the flip Chromebooks, the touchscreens, in class. They will not take them home. They would stay in class and be used as a center. So every classroom in the district, we have five devices to use in a center setting. Don't think the classrooms at K last year used them as full-class instruction. So we had a lot of Chromebooks sitting that may not have been put to use the way they could have in an upgrade setting. So K1, 2, for the top chart on the right, we're looking at a center-based. The only difference between K and 1 and grade 2 is grade 2 will have 10 devices per classroom to use in multiple centers, getting them ready for grade 3. Also on that chart is grade 3, one-to-one. Grade 3 will also use that flip Chromebook in class. Because it's a flip Chromebook and touchscreen, it's built a lot different than our other Chromebooks, which means it's a glass screen. And mobility taking them home and bringing them back, our damage rate would be too high to handle. So our proposal on this plan would be K and 1, five Chromebooks each classroom across the district staying in classroom. Grade 2 would be 10 Chromebooks as a center-based, stay-in-classroom. Grade 3, every student would have a device, but it would stay in a classroom and not go home because it's a flip. Grade 3, we have transferring classes in some buildings where it's differentiated, so they do move from class to class. Every grade 3 homeroom would have a cart. Student does not even need to bring that Chromebook with them from class to class. Because we're Google Apps, they log out, they log back in when they get to the next class, and all their information is there. So there's no mobility, no drops, and no oops, especially with the flips, because they are more expensive to obviously repair. What that would do is, our number of devices that we need is, I believe it's 825 that's on here, based on a number of devices we have. Is it 825, Chris?
Yeah, so we have...
I have 40.
We bought 1,700 flips last year, so we have to make sure that we stay under that number. So you can see in those other charts, I know the graphic is a little small, but we tried to play with the numbers to see if we could get more one-to-one for 2 and 3, but the numbers just didn't work out to keep us under that 1,700 mark, because we have to have room for spares for breakage. So really, the only way that we were able to work with the numbers is to do the small group centers for K1, 2. So that put us just over 1,600 devices. We have the flips up here in the specialty classrooms, the MD classrooms here at the high school. The children use the flips in those classrooms, which is the 125 number under there. So that brought us at to like 1,655, which gave us 45 spares for wiggle room for damage or devices that needed repair. Then what we did was we ran numbers for 4 through 8. So I'm just gonna come up here and point out. So this is K3. This is based on like a general, this is based on enrollment. We inflated the numbers a little bit for growth. So we worked these children into that graphic. And then over here, this shows you our 4 through 8 population, and then our high school population. So we would need 6,500 devices just to cover 4 through 12, and that would be a one-to-one take-home program. In the past with elementary, we made it volunteer if you wanted to take a device home. We think that that's a good practice. We had a little less than half of the parents decided to take the devices home. The other children kept them in school. That's great, because that eliminates the breakage rate. And then at the high school level, it would still be one-to-one take-home. So like Tom was saying, we have 8,000 that are out of life. We have 2,000 that have one more year of insurance coverage. So we have to figure out what is gonna be the best plan for us moving forward on how to purchase Chromebooks to outfit the 8,000 that are going, that we hope to sell back, and then have enough devices to cover spares for breakage and damage as well. We also provide Chromebooks for our perm sub-teachers. Our contact, contract to teachers, we give not proposed to, but the perm subs who are here for a short time, we just give Chromebooks to for instruction. So we also have to factor in at least 200 for perm sub-teachers.
So the number of Chromebooks that are needed is 6,410, so that we can do the take-home, 4 through 12. Again, we have 8,000 that are end-of-life, but we have 2,000 that do have one year left. If we decide to purchase the 6,500 per se, we'll be back again next year looking for another 2,000. There's ways to manage this maybe a little more effectively, where instead of 6,400 at 7,000, we keep some of the Chromebooks still in service that have one year left and hold them as spares as well, so that we're swapping out students when they break or we have to send them back for repairs, so that every student has a device with them in class. Because we rely heavily, obviously, on our devices, on Google Classroom, and learning that takes place every day. So that's where we are. Ideally, you don't want to purchase new Chromebooks as you're in school, but the situation we're in, we didn't have a choice. We had to wait, obviously, to come to the board meeting here and have this discussion. So what we're going to have to do is, when we do, if we do a purchase, we're going to have to swap out on the fly at each location as we do this. So it is tedious, but it's something that has to be done, because our Chromebooks are, we have a pile that we can't do anything with at this point. So our goal is, if we do go ahead with the purchase, to sell what we have, because there is a need for parts. So we could get some money back on the devices that we have, put it out to bid, whoever's the highest bidder for our lot of Chromebooks that have no warranty that we can't repair, we could put it out to bid and see what we have for that question.
Hi, Tom. Projected cost for the 64, did you change?
Device, we're looking at approximately 275. Again, that goes down based on number. 275 includes a device, includes insurance on it for the year.
Google license?
Google license.
And a moment.
And also, what happens, when we talk about this volume, our department's not big enough to handle 6,000 devices coming in. So they do get enrolled, they get assigned into our network, so that onsite at the company. So when they come, they come onsite, they take them out of boxes. It is a massive job to unpack 6,000 devices. So they come, they take the cardboard away, they take everything with them as they put them into our carts and get them into our locations. That includes everything.
With this, I'm gonna call it a program.
Sure.
You would now be in a position to really stay on top of it and monitor, so you're not doing like an oh-my-god every couple of years?
Yeah, so the new device that we're looking at, that we really like, we tested multiple devices. This one is called a rugged. So in the past, devices didn't really promise a drop rate, or that the extension of the screen was 180 degrees. Ours is like, you know, 120.
This is our current?
Yeah, so all of the major problems that we had with ours, snapping the screen, thumbprint going through the glass, and breaking the pixelation behind it, water damage on the top, pressure damage, breaking the processor on the computer. These companies are now coming out with school edition. So this is considered a school edition. It's made for children. So it can sustain pressure of about 300 pounds, so if it gets put in a bookbag, it won't be crushed. The screen extends 180 degrees, it won't be snapped, the glass can't break, it's got a four-foot drop rate, it's got a waterproof seal underneath the keyboard. So all those things that we've seen with these, that really destroyed these, we're hoping that this Chromebook will reduce the amount of damage.
You're talking 6,000 units for grades K1, 2, 3?
K through 12.
K through 12.
Oh, 4 through 12, I'm sorry.
K to 3 will have the devices we have in place already, the touchscreens, the flips.
Yeah.
We would recirculate those from the kindergarten classrooms out to all K3 in the district. So there's no new purchase for that.
Thank you.
No new purchase for K3. We'll put them from kindergarten in, and then this will help to replenish 4 through 12.
Yeah, and we're hoping that because this device is rugged, it will have a longer life with the children, instead of, you know...
Average life?
...it's got to three and they were done.
Right, average life for a Chromebook is three years.
Yeah, three to five.
The ones that we're selling back?
They don't work at all, or they're...
No, it's just, the...
I'm sure there's...
Parts are impossible to get cost-effectively. So we were having, when they were out of warranty, we were having parts shipped here that we were purchasing, and we were trying to repair them in-house. The cost of the parts are getting more expensive than the value of the device.
And now, we had an insurance policy that would extend the warranty. We would send them out to a company to repair. The insurance company realized the parts are too expensive. They were going, they were giving us value of the device on any Chromebooks that we sent back from May.
May 15th was when it ended.
Right, up to May 15th. Any Chromebook that didn't work, we sent back to the insurance company, they were giving us $150 back for the device, because there's no way they could fix it. There was no way. But we had a policy with them, they had to honor that, so they gave us the value back for the device at that point.
So your decision, the 340,000, and we have to come up with to do all that?
Two different things. The 340,000 is E-Rate, which is the federal program. The work that we need to be done in all of our schools, whether it's our APs, which connect us to the internet. Because the number of devices we have in our district, they're capped at 25. They have APs now that go up to 45, and 50, and 60. Because of our size, it's very tough to handle who's on it, how many devices we could have on a network. And we're literally managing room by room. There's 40 on here, it's extremely slow. We have to move students to this AP, which is, it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, and they're bottlenecking.
Right.
Trying to go online and watching videos or streaming, if a teacher is having them access to video online, stuff like that. These APs are just, they're six years old. They're, you know, they're one of the originals.
Right. Our battery backups need to be redone, our battery backups are end-of-life. If something should go down, our battery keeps our network moving, so there's no damage. That equipment from the federal program allows us to go out to bid for projects that we put together for our school, and this is every school, not just the high school, for projects that we put out. And based on your free and reduced lunch percentage, we're 80%, average, you're going to get 80% back of what you put out. So if it's a $1.4 million purchase, the district's responsible for 300,000. And we spoke about financing, Matt, before on that. So we'd have to put it out, the work could be done, and then we could look to push that payment back, Matt, to the following year, I believe it was, correct? Do you have about starting the payment back on the finance on E-Rate?
Well, E-Rate allows us to, they're gonna pay for the products, and then we would have to pay for the 340,000.
Right.
The basic plan with our technology, which we have in place already, are capital leases. Most of the larger districts in the state finance a lot of their technology through capital leases. So you lease the equipment, you pay it off over... With the Chromebooks, probably three years. I don't think you should go any further out than three years. We have over $1.3 million rolling off next year. So we would lease the equipment and then start paying it off. So we would have to pay it off after three years. The idea is to kind of flat fund your technology over time. And then with the increasing efficiencies of technology, you kind of get more and more for the same amount of money, and you just have level payments in your budget, because it's very hard to do it, you know, for districts so quickly, had to ramp up all their technology. It's a, you know, a sound plan.
So that was the E-Rate of 300,000. This is in addition to purchase of the Chromebooks, again, which would be through another finance that we've done in the past with our original 8,000 four years ago.
And that leaves us with more room to, you know, potentially, I think the teacher laptops are coming to end-of-life probably by next summer, right? I think. But, you know, it certainly leaves plenty of room using that.
It's like not having pencils. You have to have them, and they're appropriate. I mean, you have to figure out how to get it done.
And we tried looking at different plans, and that plan of taking the kindergarten Chromebooks out, making them centers, even up to grade 2. Having grade 3 stay in school, so they have the flips as well. They still have the device at 4, they take them home, they have park testing, and we could move from there, just to cut costs and not look at the 8,000 device repurchase.
A little bit as an aside, to use them as centers in the classroom in the lower grades. What are the mechanics of that? And how do the, are the children, all, you know, a group of children sitting around looking at that screen? Is it something that's projected on a TV?
Just in doing it, like when we did observations in early childhood classrooms, we did many of them, what we noticed is, it was an independent center, for the most part, where the teacher gave the child exact directions on what they did in that center. The children went up to the cart. They took their Chromebook out, they sat down, they were each doing the same activity, but independently, at their own pace.
And if it's, if it's done the right way, it's five students.
Yeah, so it was one-on-one with the five. And then five other children were reading with the teacher, five other children were doing an arts and crafts activity, or whatever. But I feel like that's, the centers is very appropriate for K1, 2. And why we chose 10 for grade 2 is they are starting to get into collaboration. When we were in grade 2 classrooms, the teachers were having them work with a buddy to write an essay, or compare and contrast with some two things. So we figured in a class of 24, having 10 really created that two or three small group environment where they're learning how to collaborate. They're getting into Google Classroom, or, you know, the teacher has them independently writing, or writing with a peer, for peer editing. So, but by third grade for park testing, they're absolutely a one-to-one environment.
Well, I just want to compliment you both on how hard you went into detail with us in considering the kids and their needs.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What I was trying to get at was the, if we weren't gonna get much back for the books that we would, you know, would it be in a better interest for us to say, try to give it to students who don't have a, some kind of device at home?
Well, we...
Would that be a plus, other than...
With 4 to 8, they're taking, 4 to 12, they're taking them home anyway. They're taking ours. With the younger grades, we can look at that, but we won't get through the year with them. It's, we'll get the parents saying, you gave us a defective device. It works after two months, but that, it's...
Here's the president's phone number.
The Chromebook I brought, excuse me, was one of the...
They're the ones I give my kids.
The Chromebook I have is one of the better ones we have. There are some with the missing keys, the screens, it's...
I never thought he was that important a lot. I don't know.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, is there any way we could look at the program a little bit more in detail?
Absolutely.
Because right now, it's 340,000 and 1,760,000. So that's 2.1 that we're asking for right now.
Before E-Rate, before that funding comes back for 80%, the 1.4 that you mentioned?
Yeah, 1.7.
Okay, 1.7, okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're not, we're not here to say we need to know now. Our plan is to come back next month and have an answer on which way we're moving, because we need to...
Yeah, we'll get a quote for the number of devices. You know, we were more curious to see how you guys felt about a 7,000 purchase versus a 6,000 purchase, based on numbers and how we can move devices around. And then we can get a quote, and obviously, you know, every month, these developers create a new generation. So Generation 4 may become cheaper because Generation 5 was released. So, you know, we can play with numbers and try to figure out what would be the best fit for the Chromebook purchase. And then for E-Rate, we really need to decide if we're gonna move forward with it, because these companies are now wanting to start the projects. We really wanted to get the projects rolling before school got started, but, you know, because when they're coming in, replacing, switching, and cabling, and APs, these are people coming into classrooms, right? So we're gonna have limited time in the evenings for them to get these jobs done. So we just kind of wanna get the ball rolling on E-Rate specifically, on top of the...
And the 275 price I gave was on a Generation 4. HB has a small amount of Generation 3 left. They're cheaper, but once they're gone, they're not.
Yeah, I think they have like, they had 500,000 left as of two and a half months ago.
Right.
So districts are buying them up, because they've become more inexpensive, because they've released the new one, so...
So we'll get the whole work for you for next month, and then we'll have a, hopefully have an answer. Any other questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, just wanna, and every time we come, we feel like we're looking for money. So I just want to finish on something different, maybe. We met with Dr. Wonko this summer.
We're doing something that's great.
Maybe, maybe. And we talked about digital backpacks. And it's a great idea to cut back on paper and printing and sending stuff home. So what we've been working on is, on every school website, every principal, every administrator's gonna have a digital backpack. So letters that are going home, instead of going home, are now gonna be on the site's digital backpack. So as a former principal, I know if we cleaned our desks in the upper grades, those letters are all sitting there from September. So now they're all there, parents can go in, view them, print them, everything's gonna be there, and it's a running record throughout the year, and it doesn't cost us anything. And we'll save money as well on paper.
We have them itemized by month, so there'll be a September link, November, December, so on. So whenever there is a district document or a principal document, it'll be specific to the building.
Archive, what you need.
Right, it'll be archived there, so the parents can access it all year. And then Dr. Wonko is also having us create a briefcase, which is for administration and principals. So when he has specific letters that he needs us to know, instead of having them printed out and put in the mail to us or on our desks, we can all access them immediately from the briefcase.
Would you also touch on the class list?
School supplies?
Right.
Supply list. At the end of last year, it was asked that school supply list be placed on the websites. It happened, it didn't happen. So what we were doing over the last two weeks is reaching out, making sure that schools have their supply list up. Again, and we're transferring into a big district, making sure it's consistent. It's very difficult, because some schools have it based by teacher, not by grade level. So now we have a lot of class lists that we're looking at to try and consume and make it simpler to see. So if you go on to a lot of the schools, you'll see their supply list by grade level on your site. What we also want to do is contact Walmart, so they're holding our lists. So if students come in, you're looking for a grade K supply list for a midtown school. We have it right here, here it is. Now the supply list is there, and it just streamlines, streamlines it a lot better for parents and out looking everywhere for that. So we're working on that to get that out to everybody and on our site. So we want to make sure our site is accessed every day and is reason to go. Having those lists, having documents on here, the backpack, there's no other reason to go but for that information.
My backpack got lighter these past month and a half.
Yeah, I copy that, Dr. Wonko. I love to get him an email.
Awesome. And I apologize out loud for everybody that I don't do the send-receive, because I don't know if it's hooked up to your telephone, and I don't want to tell you what time I'm reading, so...
Anything else, Russ?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
He left his Chromebooks here.
What's that?
Oh, jeez. Oh, pretty came in the other door.
So they're not, they're not loss-proof. You can...
They're one of the 8,000 that are...
A trick.
Dr. Wonko, would you mind introducing our next speaker?
While you run down the hall?
While I run down the hall.
Certainly, Dr. Mater. Good evening, everyone. We'll jump around a little bit on the agenda, because we had a slight glitch with the beginning. And I'd ask Mr. Delucia, as you know, he's come into our district to help with some new initiatives that we're putting into the business area. And we have a very robust agenda for the administrators this Monday. One of the items on there is zero-based budgeting. You will get a full presentation on this next month. Tonight, you'll get a little taste of where we're going with this idea. And I think we will also be covering something about the Genesis, or you want, Dr. Better?
We'll go over some health benefit stuff, we'll go over the HR stuff. Again, I'll be very brief. Thank you again for seeing the trustees. from the directors, through the principals, through the cabinet, and it's going to spell out the entire budget process. And at the convocation on Monday, Dr. Wonko's asked me to come in, and we have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'll bring to the full board at your next meeting to show you after the administrators have seen it. And it's going to spell out how the budget's going to be built from a zero base all the way through where we're going to get. And there's, there's going to be multiple steps. It's going to be a long, but well-thought-out process. It's going to be a process that we're really going to ensure that we're incorporating the mission of the school district, the goals of the school district, and the new strategic plan that you're developing. And that the final budget recommendation from Dr. Wonko that will come to the trustees for your consideration in the springtime will be supportive of those, those items. The process is going to be a little different for your administrators. Sometimes change can be considered a little painful because it might mean a little bit more work for them. But I think when we look at the way our numbers kind of came out last year with the focus that the trustees and the administration and Dr. Wonko has, you know, on fiscal stability, long-term sustainable growth, you really need an all-encompassing budget process that's going to take six, seven, eight months every year. It's going to become a living, breathing process. This process is going to become a part of the way you do your business for the entire school year. And it's going to start now in September. It's really going to kick off when we count students on October 15th and report our counts down to the state of New Jersey. And then from there, you'll see, you'll hear the whole process. So I know your time is very valuable tonight, so I'm not going to go too far into it. But it will be based, you know, in zero-based approach. We'll be looking at everything with the cap. You know, I will still recommend to the trustees today, as I've recommended to Dr. Wonko, I know you had a large tax increase this year. I know you're all very cognizant of that. I still think, looking at things, you have to plan for going up to the 2% cap for the next year as we're looking so preliminary. You're going to hear from me in a few minutes relative to the health insurance and some of the rates. I know Mr. Smith shared it with the finance committee, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes of where those numbers are looking to go for next year and the following year. And some of those numbers are astronomical. And when you factor that in alone, it's really hard to build a budget to just maintain your programs with a 2% increase on your tax levy.
It's really hard to maintain anything without getting proper funding. So while we might be considering the 2% cap as a must-do, it's also appropriate to continue putting people's feet to the fire, so.
I fully agree with that statement, Madam Trustee.
But the cap we're going, we're talking about another cap as well. Zero-based budget. I don't want you to get the idea you could just budget on and for none. There will be a cap that we give to every school as well that they cannot-
Yeah.
Understood. So that's zero-based budget.
Yeah.
You work to the number.
The cap will be individualized. For example, the science department cap is going to be looked for than another department cap.
Correct.
So who determines the cap per department? Who does that?
We are going to be doing that collaboratively with a brief. Now, a brief is something you're not used to here in Bayonne either. And that's something that we'll be going over with the administrators on Monday as well. But it's a process where you have to justify what you need for your department or your school. That then comes to the cabinet. We look at it, our business administrator, Mr. Delucia. We then decide, is this reasonable? Is it doable? So the brief process, I'll be sending out probably three or four samples that I've done in the past so that the administration could see the model of what we've done. The same way as Mr. Figu put on the Chromebooks for the workshop on Monday for developing the strategic plan, because each school's going to develop their own plan on Monday, and then from those, we're going to develop the district plan. So I hope that addresses your-
Without us, it does. We have to recognize that, you know, every school isn't identical, and every department isn't identical, and your budget requirements will be different.
You're exactly right, and that's why we're doing all the decentralization.
Let me know if I'm right, Will, too, but in layman's terms here, most departments in the past, they had a budget. The difference would be is that in the past, I'm saying, Mary Jane, here's your $10,000. And now it's up to Mary Jane to spend it any way she feels fit.
To get you back to 992.
Now it's, Mary Jane, your cap is $10,000. Show me how, but you have to show me each issue, how you want to spend it. So there's, it's not, you know, now there's going to be somebody reviewing, and maybe she doesn't need to spend $10,000 when we find this out as opposed to, and, you know, the old days where, I remember, I don't want to bring up federal problems, but if they gave you a certain amount of money, you spent a certain amount of money because-
They get you.
I wouldn't get it next year possibly. So in this case, I think what I like about this is they have to prove what they need as opposed to, "I'm just getting it, you know, because I happen to have this money."
Yeah, but from my understanding, you were saying that next year, we might have to go a tax increase plus our cap of 2%. Why can't we just work with what we have right now to control that we don't do a tax increase?
We're going to attempt to do that with all the means that we can. I'm just saying to you that my preliminary look at things, I look at big picture, and I look at things like how underfunded we are. We were lucky to get that extra state aid this year. Let's first off, hope that state aid stays for next year. With somebody new data threatened, we may lose that money right away at the stroke of a pen.
Yeah, but we should, we should control our money that we have right now-
Correct.
Not to increase to even look at the tax for next year, because-
That's part of why the zero-based budgeting is appropriate right now.
Yeah, but from my understanding, they're saying that we might have to even do the 2% cap on taxes. We shouldn't look at that. We should look at what we have, and this is the maximum we could spend and no over that. And then that way, we don't have to worry about it any day.
I think we'll make attempts to do that, but with, with some of the-
We're certainly going to, but we're also going to be realistic.
Yeah, but, but-
The cap is going to be, we're talking about two different caps. We're talking about the state cap or the 2%. We're talking about the cap for each department or school. We're going to set a limit for how much they spend.
Yeah, the cap for each school, but then we shouldn't be looking at taxes because this is how much money we have. We shouldn't spend over. That's what I'm saying. We shouldn't spend over how much we have.
Understood.
We're thinking that next year, we're going to get tax. We shouldn't look at it that way. We should cap how much we spend based on how much we have.
Well, again, that cap will be for the individual schools and departments, and that will be set within what we have. It won't be taking another 2% above that. We won't be doing that, no.
I'm hoping that we shoot actually for next year, no tax increases. If we could make that happen, that would be great.
I think it would be phenomenal if we could make that happen. I agree wholeheartedly.
That should be one of our goals.
I believe that sure is a goal of ours.
Okay.
Well, if you sent out some goals today, if some of you got a chance to look at it, you'll probably see that it's one of the things we're hoping to do.
Okay, great.
So I think the confusion came when I said the word cap. What I was speaking about was the cap for each individual school.
It wasn't a confusion, it was the confusion.
Yeah. I, I mentioned tax levy when I said after cap. That was-
That was a confused comment.
Correct, correct.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
And I was just reminding them of how sensitive we are.
Yep. No, and I fully can appreciate that. And, you know, I'm sure Dr. Wonko would love to recommend a budget with no tax increase.
Absolutely.
And we'll make every attempt for that.
The struggle is to give children and teachers what they need and deserve versus what we have to work with. And I don't think until recently, it was completely understood how, how hard that was to do and what you didn't know you didn't have. It was not knowing what didn't exist-
Correct.
-that got some people in trouble, so.
And the biggest thing we've been doing lately, the last two weeks, which are all to my next point if I can, is we've been working with the Human Resources Department in formulating what we're calling Unique Position Codes, or UPC codes, so that the HR and Kenny can now manage all the staff by positions. We've kind of been managing by people. And we're going to change that philosophy to manage by positions so we can have unique position controls. We can budget position by position, and when a position becomes vacant, he can fill that position. So that's really going to help from a budgeting perspective. It's going to build a lot of things into the budget. It'll tie everything together. So we've spent a lot of time, and right now, for example, in the high school, last year, we had all the teachers in one budget account. Teachers nine to 12, and that was it. Now, going forward, we're going to have accounts for every single academic department.
I still have that circled on one of our financial reports.
Yeah, we'll now have accounts for every single academic department, and we can help budget and monitor what the math department has versus the science department versus world language versus English. Like you-
This is common sense stuff that we're getting to.
And along the sides, once we, Human Resources has the personnel side of the budget done, then we'll have the other expenses side and all those pens and pencils and good things we need. It'll all match up. And in the end of this thing, Dr. Wonko's going to prepare what we're calling a budget book. It's going to be about a half an inch thick. It'll be reported to the trustees of every single item in the entire budget. It's going to be departmentalized all the way down to every department and then every school location as well. And that's how we're going to report to you in the springtime. That's the culmination of all this information.
That's what I'm, I've worked with. It's why it's very, very difficult this past year trying to get other people to provide financial reports. But the thing was, they weren't structured to be able to give that kind of detail.
Correct.
So this is great.
Correct. And to piggyback on that again, be real quick, I know your time is tight. I want to give you an update on the health insurance work, because they, again, one of our biggest lines in our budget. We have Jim Finn from Brown and Brown here tonight if you have any questions. Quick update, I know Mr. Smith sent out to the finance committee and the full board.
Just the finance committee.
Finance.
We'll get it out to the full board tomorrow with our weekend mailing.
The state came out with a 13% increase for the health insurance effective January 1st. You may not think 13% is a bad number. That's why I have my answer here. Explain it to you.
I expected lower.
But if you read the information, the state of New Jersey, just like Bayonne, changed their prescription program. If they did not make that prescription change, like you guys so smartly did with Fairview, or other people who were in the room to help us out tonight, Tammy's here, the rate would have been a 20% increase. So no, the smart moves that Tammy recommended and the trustees followed saved you guys some money. The state did the same thing, which artificially deflated the increase to 13%. If you read the report from the Aon Consultants, they're already projecting that a year from now, 20% increase. So really, you're looking at 13% this year in January and another 18 to 20% the following year. The good thing is, again, we got out ahead of the curve. We made our experience report request down to the state of New Jersey. They've received it. They've told us we should have all our experience back within the next three weeks. As soon as it comes back, it's going to come to Mr. Smith's office. He'll forward it over to myself, and we'll get it to Mr. Finn. And they're going to start right away marketing the plan, as we talked about. Mr. Finn already has spoken with the major players out there, Horizon, AmeriHealth, Cigda. And there's a lot of interest for your business where we're at right now. And if you think about it, our claims have been relatively level for the past two years. As I said at the last meeting, for every dollar we've paid the state, they've paid doctors that same dollar. Well, now when we start paying the state 13% more, if our payments to doctors stay the same, we look a little better. And in the following year, if it goes to 20%, we really look good in the insurance eyes. So, you know, I think we're cautiously optimistic, if that's a fair statement, that we'll come back with a recommendation for the trustees' consideration for a potential change to get out of the state health benefits plan. But as I warned the finance committee last night, I could probably tell you right now in good faith, it's not going to mean significant savings in year one.
No, it certainly doesn't.
It's more long-term fiscal stability. And the whole philosophy of this budget that Dr. Wonko is going to roll out on Monday is long-term fiscal stability. And that's what this kind of program is going to do.
I'd like to know more once the claims history comes in.
Yeah. And I have Mr. Finn here, if I want to ask him any questions, too. I'm sorry that if I stole on your thunder, but he's available for any detailed questions you have with the health insurance.
I'm used to stealing my thunder, Brian. That's okay, thanks. Just a quick intro on our company, Brian Brown, Benefit Advisors. And again, thanks for approving us last meeting to consult with the district on health benefits. If you do nothing, you'll be paying in five years, $30 million for your employee benefits, for your health insurance. Right now, you're paying $18 million. The vehicle that you're in, the school employee health plan, is ailing, and it's a couple of more bad years away from failing. The market for school district business, and we should know, we represent about 300 of New Jersey's 583 districts, is quickly dividing into winners and losers. The winners are innovating while being able to honor their collective bargaining obligations, and the losers are staying put in a program operated by the state of New Jersey that has had an average annual rate increase of 11%. 11% since 2010. That means every seven years, the premium doubles, which is why in five years, 18 million becomes 30 million. There are alternatives out there. Forty-three school districts have left the New Jersey School Employee Health Plan in the past three years. The latest example would be Montgomery Board of Ed. Not quite your size, but about 700 employees. They left state health benefits, or school employee health, as it's technically called, July 1st, and they saved $1.5 million guaranteed while maintaining all benefits and the exact scene provider network. So it can be done. It can't be done overnight. Your group is not quite as attractive a risk as Montgomery. There are some things that we can do about that long term. So more to come down the road, but once the claims experience comes back, even if it has not improved, as long as it is not dramatically deteriorated, there may be things that we can do to invest in a privately insured plan, whether that be on a, what we call a fully insured basis or a self-insured basis, where you can get more data. Right now, the data you get on an $18 million health plan from the carriers that are authorized by the Division of Pension and Benefits to run that plan, you can fit it on two pages for an $18 million health plan. If you were privately insured, you'd be able to look into, while respecting everyone's privacy, all of the data that's driving these costs so that you can decide what to do about it, whether that be unilaterally or through collective bargaining. Right now, your options are very limited. Of the 40 or so school districts that have left school employee health since 2010, 32 of those are our clients. So we know where the wins are, and we know where the loses are, where the losses are. So thanks again for hiring us last month. And I know this is a big topic, because anybody have any questions?
Thirty-two that left. How long ago did they leave?
Since 2014 was when our data goes back to, and every one except two of those is still privately insured. Only two have retreated back to the school employee health. And the problem with the school employee health plan is it's an insurer of last resort. Whether your district has good claims experience or bad, you get the same rates. And very quickly, school districts with good claims experience leave, worsening the risk pool for the groups that are left in, which is why this year's rate increase is the biggest rate increase in five years. And we're advising our clients that are in that plan who can't get out or choose not to try to get out, that as of January 19, they should be budgeting an 18% rate increase. So when you talk about 2% caps and buying new technology and everything you want to do, the silent killer for your budget is health insurance. And we're here to help you do something about it. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. It's a scary subject, healthcare, isn't it? The numbers are just boggling, but something we better look at, we better look at it every day.
You know it's a monster when you have to wait weeks to get your own data back.
That's deliberate.
Versus being able to pull it up and look at it.
That's deliberate by the Division of-
It absolutely is. I've gone through it. It absolutely is.
Okay, just some housekeeping before I start the agenda. The trustees, you have your little cheat sheet on our meetings. You could put it in your pocketbooks, your wallets. I'm trying to think of when we're having meetings. Also, we, I've got a notice back from Hilda Rosario from the county clerk's office, and you see the unofficial, unofficial master list for the school board elections and the way people are ranked on the ballot. And then my final handout that you have in front of you is-
Where they are placed.
New Jersey School Board Healthcare Summit. If anyone's interested, you can contact Mr. Smith's office, and we can register you if you choose to go. Okay. That being said, I will start with our agenda. I'll remind you all of the time. We have to try and finish our open workshop by 8:00. The first group of resolutions, the first 40-something, you've all seen. They were emailed to you. You've all had them. I'll go a little quickly when it comes to those. I'll mention any changes we might have in those, and then we could spend some time on the ones you haven't seen yet. Resolution number one is our approval of our minutes. You'll see our minutes from both July meetings have been received. On communications, I believe the only thing you did not see was this last one with the subject of teacher aid. And I also included Mr. Smith's response to her letter. So it's not that we were not dealing with it. We did inform her that her information was sent to the business department, was sent to payroll. We're just checking those numbers. So I want to assure you that we are working on that. Resolution three, two trustees like to move in second this evening?
I'm moving.
Great. So we'll go with Vice President Will back. This is your monthly money received. And Trustee Ryan, would you mind just sort of saving us that?
You don't have to walk around.
All right. You'll see on four, our reports. We only have our repair department report. Everything else is being finalized, so you'll probably see that at next month's meeting.
So what are we accepting?
All you're accepting is the repair department report that was emailed to you from Liz about the same, I think it was the same day I sent you your packets. Resolution five is our monthly claim and accounts. Six, you'll see an agreement with progressive therapy. Six, you'll see an agreement with progressive therapy, behavior analytical services to a Seven is you'll see home, home instruction staff for the school year. We have a contract with North Jersey Elks Development Disabilities Agency for one student. You'll see it's a July 5th start date to June 2018. We have personnel through our parent newsletter. We have an agreement with Princeton College Consulting for a in-service.
What's things here?
It is for three days. Our school counselor and English teachers throughout the district, I believe.
Correct. September 29th and November 7th are our full-day staff training and development days.
And this is through federal Title II funds. Eleven is an agreement with staff development.
One quick question, I'm sorry, Dr. Mia. On 10, I know I'm reading this quickly. Are the representatives who are doing the professional development coming here, or are teachers going to Princeton?
This is where they come in.
They're coming in.
The two full day, there's actually two full days, and one is October 17th, which you would not need to sub for the guidance council.
That's why, thank you.
So 11, once again, another staff development workshop, world language teachers.
Again, this is our full-day staff training and development, September 29th, November 7th, March 16th.
Again, with staff development, you'll see this is for grades K-1, 2 ESL and regular ed teachers, also for professional development days. Thirteen, we have personnel through the parent website.
Go ahead. I asked a million questions, you did.
No, so is this a Title I website, or is this a school website itself?
No, this is a Title I website. Remember, we have to reserve 1% of the allocation, so $30,000 has to be involved in the parent involved. So we use it for the parent newsletter, the parent resource center, the parent workshops, the parent website will be one of them. So we do have to reserve $30,000 to make sure that we're providing.
And the parent website is district-wide, or is it specific to school?
It's a link on the, it's like one of the programs, so it's Title I.
Right, and I was just wondering, because both teachers are from Woodrow Wilson.
That's exactly what we're all.
Title I teachers.
Okay.
If they have experience with the, with the Title I program.
Okay, they applied, or they were selected?
We asked our Title I teachers to put a letter of intent.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And you see, we also did that with the, our parent newsletter, and only one person.
Gotcha.
Fourteen, we're adding to our curriculum writing, available list of personnel.
Once again, this is as needed.
Yeah, correct. That's correct.
Fifteen, we have personnel to the Every Student Succeed Act. And you'll see breakdown of salary going to the grant. Okay. Sixteen, personnel to data analysis teams. You see additional personnel, just the highlighted name toward the bottom. Next is an agreement with Summit Speech. You see services for a classified student that resides in Bayonne. Eighteen, placement of handicapped pupil, cerebral palsy league. You'll see two students. It's a September 5th start date. The next resolution, nineteen, we did, I believe, last month, but this is being revised because one student returned back to the district. So it's, the resolution is down to four students. Twenty, you'll see, Essick Valley, you'll see one student on a 10-month program, and then below that, you'll see the two students. Twenty-one, we did last month. This is a revision because the total figure, the 204,930, was incorrect last month. This is the correct total. The math was wrong.
Did Carol catch it?
No, actually, the special services caught it the very next day. Twenty-two, Division of Child Protection. Student placed in a group home is our responsibility, and we're doing High Point Regional School, high school transportation.
And the same thing for 23 as well?
As soon as I look at 23, I'll make sure I didn't make a mistake. No, this is different.
Different timeframe.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so 22, that's how they told me. 22 is the summer program, and 23 is the school year.
Now, what's the reasoning why the student is so far away?
I don't know the exact reason for the placement, but based.
IP-driven.
It's also division, it's, I could say the ball, it's.
That's why, usually it's that. It's, once it's Division of Child Protection, permis, for whatever reason, he wound up in Hamburg, this was the last district he actually is tied to, but we're responsible.
That's what I'm saying.
Twenty-four, District Professional Development and District Mentoring Plans. Twenty-five is our affirmative action and our 504 transition plans, which we do every You'll see a list of the administrators and who is attached to what. Twenty-six is our student-teacher junior practicums, and you'll see a list of, do we, college, I'm sorry, do we pay for these teachers, or? The student practicums are, the students just come in as part of their assignment from college?
Yeah, they pay for the course.
We don't pay for it.
No, but you don't pay for that? Okay.
They pay.
They pay, I believe.
It's a course. It's a course in college. They pay the college tuition.
Bring some more there.
Basically providing a service.
So then I have a list of staff to attend workshops. The first one is ACT College and Career Readiness, group of our counselors. Also for our counselors, College Hall Fall Counselor Workshop. It's over a course of three days.
How many costs? I don't see a cost. Am I not, again, am I a speaker? What's the cost?
No cost per counselor.
It does read, oh, at no cost. There you go. But it's going to be paid from local funds, at such expenditures.
If they travel.
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 They could put in for their mileage.
But if a mileage is tall.
But there's no cost on tuition.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty-nine, Higher Education Assistance Authority Annual Financial Aid Training.
No cost.
Dr. Deign, would it be worth it to, kind of like, I see there are six registers going to, like, Bloomfield. What about providing a van for all of them? Would it cost us? Instead of having, instead of having them bill us for time and, not time, but transportation?
With a driver?
Can we use a van? Like, on October 3rd, we have six people going to Bloomfield College. Why don't you just throw them all on, not throw them, but have them go on a van and travel together? No? Specifically page, I guess it'd be, no, not page, but right after 28. I don't see them taking a private transportation and billing us. Why don't we just put them on a van? It's not a question. It's silly.
Mr. Smith, the question is, what's cheaper? Putting them all on a van with a driver, or letting them put in for their mileage?
The availability of our school bus drivers during the course of the day also. We'll have to see if there are any field trips that day, who's in. We're down a bus driver to begin with, so we'll have to take a look at it, but we can certainly investigate.
You also have to also look at the fact that if they're going to a workshop that's closer to their home, like, they're going to drive all the way into Bayonne. So just, yeah, they're going to drive all the way into Bayonne just to get on the bus to go back out. You know, I mean, we're talking about a minimal amount of reimbursement.
Additionally, many, many teachers do not even put in for the mileage.
Yeah.
If you liked I was, yes, you forgot.
Just a thought.
I'm going to move ahead, 30 is bullying, prevention and intervention training.
If I could comment on this one, this is a good, great opportunity, because this is the first time we'll be using our Title IV money. As you know, in the past, I talked to you about Title I, Title II, Title III. We had an allocation for Title IV, about $30,000. Title IV is for social, emotional intelligence and support students, so we have an opportunity to send our Director of Personnel Services with the Title IV money to get the bullying training. You know, when bullying cases come in, now we'll have a certified individual on staff, which will help with a lot of our cases. So this is the first opportunity for Title IV.
Next up is a contract with Rutgers University. It's a full-day workshop in September. Also paid through Title II A funds. Thirty-two is contract with Stevens, also full-day workshop. Also Title II A funds. Again, Stevens Institute for another full-day workshop, Title II A funds. Thirty-four is an agreement with Educational Services Commission. It is Title I Instruction Services.
Yes, this is a partnership with the Education Service Commission to provide Title I services at All Saints Catholic Academy.
And then same with thirty-five.
Yes, thirty-five is to provide Title III Women's and English Proficiency Student Services at Marist for after-school tutoring.
Thirty-six, Personnel and Professional Development and Technology, and in this, we're going to actually use our own staff. Wait, so our staff is training?
So this would be, Mr. Vogu and Mrs. Dr. McAndrew would do webinars for our staff, as you know, as we do the new technology upgrades. Sometimes teachers want additional support, so they'll go on at night, they'll do a webinar, so we would pay them out of the two-way class.
So you can't do it during the day?
The teachers are all present.
No, I mean, like, prepare a webinar, and then it's like in a video or something?
You're in him today.
You could provide.
Like a video, so they could see whenever they want to.
We could do that, though.
Okay. It doesn't allow for any interaction.
The webinar, they can interact, it's to go in the handle. If you just tell them the detail, the questions they can ask or have answered.
They're going to do it at night.
Teachers have logged on at night.
They're already engaged.
Maybe we could tape the webinar and keep it for future reference, and if someone wants to review it, they can go through it that way.
But there's still interaction.
Right, but if they want to refresh it.
You know, I don't understand the issue. This is coming out of Title II A funds, so it's not even coming out of the local funding.
Just a reminder.
I mean, I don't understand why that's an issue.
Because we could use it for something else.
But it's two-way funds.
It's designated.
It's designated for that, for that purpose.
There's many different things they can use it for. Including what the two-way.
Here's other professional development that you could probably provide, but the webinar, especially if it's involving technology, and every day, something changes in technology, it'd be nice to have this as a resource. I understand that. To, kind of like.
With the two-way budget, we try to give every department a little bit of the allocation so they can provide support. As you see, we've had the science, we've had the counseling.
Does we have to, like, you know, have some, maybe Title II A funds? I think the same thing should apply. Just because you have the money to, to, to trustee Lawandi's point, just because you have the money, just don't spend it bully-nerdy, beyond that. But this, I'm not suggesting being spent that way, because technology, as I said before, repeating myself, it changes every day. So.
Oh, with the Google Classroom, or the support for the park, sometimes the teacher's going to the park the first time, their little, comfort levels are a little different, they want to go on. How do I start the test? How do I stop the test? This just provides the opportunities. But like Mr. Smith says, we absolutely taped that. Mr. Vogu will be here next month, if you want to talk about some of the webinars, I'm sure you can answer some of those questions.
That's all right. You'll catch them in the zero-based budgeting, whether or not they're spending inappropriately.
Okay, 37 is another professional development all day for science teachers, grades nine to 12. Also Title II A funds.
You know, the question on the Title II A funds, only having been there, when you are absent from the classroom, we have to provide a substitute. Now, was the subsalary also included from the Title II A funds, or does it come out of our budget?
The two-way that we're doing tonight, we're bringing consultants into the district for the full-day staff training development days, September 29th, November 7th, March, okay, so that's bringing them in, so they'll already have it. September 29th, November 7th, March, okay, so that's bringing them in, so they'll already have it. There's another part of the two-way money where they can go out of district where we can pay. If you do it with two-way money, if it's for New Jersey student learning standards, we will pay for the travel out of the two-way. But additionally, we allocate $15,000 for substitutes, if it's a two-way, if it's a two-way workshop.
If it's a two-way workshop, okay. Thank you.
Next up, thirty-eight is adopt, any changes in policy and bylaws? You'll see a whole list of policies with changes was sent home.
These changes are basically mandates.
Pretty much. Thirty-nine, uh, actually, this is the same that I sent home. Personnel and Community Ed, so there's no changes from the copy that I sent home. Okay, number forty, yes. Number forty's being tabled only because there's a duplicate resolution with the updated corrected date that'll be later on. So forty's tabled, forty-one and forty-two sort of go together. The first one is the Individual School Parent Involvement Policy, followed by forty-two, which is the district-wide. We do this every year. So pretty much the paperwork is the same handouts that you, you saw last year.
Again, when we go through consolidated monitoring, they look for this to make sure that we have some outreach to the parents. Again, what do we do with the policies? It's our parent resource center, it's our parent workshops, our parent website, our Title I Times newsletter and our, additionally, our parent workshops. We like try to make sure that every school has three Title I parent workshops. We also do an orientation meeting in September, so any students that have been identified come in and their parents meet with our Title I teachers to discuss the program.
Forty-three is going to do for inside. Forty-four is approval to accept the 2017-18 Chapter 192, 193. Forty-five is personnel being appointed to Every Student Succeeds Act and a breakdown of their salary and percent to the grant. Okay, yeah, I will move this to, I will move this to non-consent.
The benefit's not signed yet.
Yes, so trustee Lawande, would you mind moving that?
Also.
And I'll go over the change when we get inside. Thank you. Okay, forty-six, Foundation for Educational Administration. You'll see a professional development day. Forty-seven, Agreement with Elevate Educators. I'm sorry, Elevate Educators also for using interactive read aloud complex text for in-service. Forty-eight. IDEA Personnel.
These people were in this position already?
Question is, are they in that position currently or in the upcoming school year? Resolution forty-eight, those personnel. Well, the behaviorist we recently just hired last month, so she's.
She's.
This is for this school year.
Yeah, she listed twice.
Uh, fifty-fifty on her salary.
Okay.
And the other one has been here for a hundred years, so. Well, they have, you know, a good thirty years.
Maybe not a hundred, but.
Sure you'd be happy to hear that.
I'm sure he'll thank you for that.
Okay, forty-nine, on the workshop, this is a three-day training workshop for two of our staff members. Okay, and I have a few more placements, starting with fifty, East Mountain School, one student is a ten-month program for tuition. Fifty-one, so the Fallsy League, two students. Also a ten-month program. And we have an agreement with the Dyslexia Center of Princeton. Dyslexia Evaluation for a, for two of our students in the district. Fifty-three will be for inside. Fifty-four, beginning at the beginning of the start of school, we possibly change some boundary.
I'm not gonna do that one.
Why?
I have a family member that.
Oh, okay. Uh, so then I'll move this to, I'm.
That's only effective you, right? It's not.
I'm sorry.
All right. So I do have a question about the boundaries here, fifty-four.
What?
So eight oh eight to eight forty-five Avenue A, that's like on 32nd, 33rd, right? In Avenue A, correct? Eight oh four, eight oh five? That's like thirtieth, thirtieth.
Mr. Smith, what street are you, thirty-seven?
I'm thirty-seventh and the end of Avenue A.
Yeah, so I think it's about thirty-seventh and Avenue A, probably down to Roosevelt Cars on Avenue A.
Okay, all right.
Can you explain the rationale of why you're changing the boundaries?
We do it every year. Last year, there was a few blocks off Avenue A that were result, when they did that, they left the houses out on Avenue A. The new, there's two new streets, Northway and Hobart Avenue, just the new streets. And then the Agnes Street. We had a parent come in, we looked at it for a couple of months and that was our recommendation after the attendance department worked. This is again, something we do each year and as class sizes, you know, change, we look at that as well. But at this time, that Avenue A was left out. And two new streets and Agnes Street was a recommendation from the attendance department.
Yeah, only other question I have, do you have an approximate idea of how many students this would affect? I mean, you're going to number, number one school, Bailey, well, it doesn't mean, you're going to Bailey School and then.
Four or five.
Then you're going to have them move to, that's like geographically, huge difference.
Only for, only for new.
Oh, only for new, so who's, like, who's ever currently in that school, they're kinda like grandparented in or grand.
They would have a choice if they chose to go to the new school, they could do that, but we would never change a child that is currently in that school. It's only for new residents.
Okay.
Okay.
It's for new students. Thank you.
Fifty-five is approval of our submission of the Comprehensive Equity Plan Statement of Assurance. We have our bullying report. Zero incidents of HIV this month.
Good to know.
You've been getting on top of that, huh?
You people have been playing well together?
Yeah.
A lot of vacations, it's. Uh, fifty-seven is an emergency transportation contract. You'll see the first for the Yostis Anthony and then Newark Transport towards the bottom.
What are their emergencies?
They, we were just informed by special services, so they probably are brand-new, either IEPs or new students to the district.
And they're homeless now, so we're responsible. Last registered domicile, they're homeless, they're living in these shelters in North Bergen and in Newark and we're responsible to bring them to, to those schools.
Uh, fifty-eight, you've heard from the superintendent. This is allowing us, this approves the submission for the 2017-18 PEA grant application, which was due on the 21st, which we did apply for. So this puts us in the mix.
Just a clarification on the resolution, it's just saying that we are agreeing to apply.
Yes.
That's all. Does it mean that if we get it, we accept it? We're just agreeing at this point in the process to apply for it.
Correct.
One of our stipulations was basically, we wouldn't want to apply for something that if we found out was gonna cost us.
Right, that's what my concern is.
That was, that's where you had to make sure that we could apply and not be held accountable for it.
This is step one, but it doesn't mean we're definitely going to.
Right.
We have to explore a lot more research.
Fifty-nine is inside sixty. This was that Resolution forty that I said duplicated. So sixty is the correct resolution, Devil's Next to Central Workshop. These are the correct dates for the workshop.
That was just a time change back to me, they would, they would prefer to start at nine.
Yes. And my last resolution on consent, approval of coaches, advisors. I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at that since this is the first you're seeing it. It wasn't in your packet that I sent. So that'll be our last resolution on consent. Superintendent Waco, that is all I have for outside. I do have a bunch of items for inside.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a very productive month for the Bayonne Public School District. The 2018 IDEA consolidation application has received final approval from the Office of Grant Management. I extend my deep congratulations to our Special Education Department for all their hard work and dedication in preparing and submitting this detailed report. In addition, we finished the reconfiguration of the high school. We satisfied our regular staffing for the entire district except for one position that Mr. Lopez is working on now. That's a chemistry teacher, so we're fully staffed except for that one position. We conducted interviews to the supervisor of special services positions as well as the coordinator dean positions and I am making recommendations this evening for the finalists for appointment. I also met with a group of academy students to relay some of their concerns regarding the decentralization of the program. They understand the situation and are working with our directors right now to create brochures regarding specific tracks that we are offering. I also met with the core curriculum directors and Dr. Deggman to review this initiative so that everyone's on the same page. We'll have a nice electronic as well as a handout brochure for all of those tracks so everyone will see that they are still getting the same courses that were being offered prior to the decentralization. As you know, grant money became available for the full-day preschool. We approved that this evening that we put in. I need to thank Mrs. Monica Flynn and Mr. Matthew Bolden for not only attending the mandatory workshop but for really working very hard to get that proposal done. I convened a small committee. We, we met to go over all the things that we thought would be outliers for this. As Mrs. Finity had stated, we wanted to make sure we didn't put ourselves in a position where we would be getting a grant that would cost us money. If we're successful, which I think we will be, we will be able to serve seventy-five students with this program, which means we will have to do a lottery to decide who goes into the program. It will be very popular. One of the things we were able to accomplish, we were looking at trailers, I think you saw an article in the paper on that. Because we consolidated many classes, remember, we still have sixty positions that are still not back in the system. So we had four classrooms that we could move into and one classroom is already in use, that would become our fifth. So on the bad side of the ledger, those people are not back, but it did give us some room for the preschool program. I also convened a Genesis meeting for personnel involved with student records. This was another component of the Genesis package. Mr. Broderick was at that workshop, I believe, and it's a program that I've used in many districts. It's the leader in the state in web-based systems reporting. It does everything for the nurses, special ed, it does our master scheduling. It will save us time-wise an extremely great amount of time and be able to generate reports that we need for the state. One of the biggest advantages of Genesis is that it updates constantly. It's only a New Jersey-based company. It only services New Jersey schools, so anything that comes out new with the New Jersey state law for NJ DOE, they automatically update. So that's why they have such a good track record. In the area of curriculum, Dr. Deggman continues to plan for the 29th for the service staff training, September 29th. He will also be sharing with you some resolutions for parents and students participating in Title I program and the District Professional Development Plan, which I emailed to you earlier in the week, as well as the Board District Goals and Missions. He will also present an update on Genesis and eDoctrinea. Doctor?
Okay, so good evening, I'd like to present to you the District Professional Development Plan. If you have a look in your Burgundy folder, it's item number one. They were looking at four goals for the year. And if you also pull out in the Burgundy folder, item number two, I can let you know the direction we're going in. So the areas we'll be looking at would be chronic absenteeism, the high school graduation rate, response to intervention and a continuation of our professional learning communities, which has been in the district for about the last five years. And if you look at the ESSA School Accountability Summary, item number two, when we move from no child left behind to the ESSA, you see the measurements for schools, individual schools. And what I did is I put an asterisk next to a few of them. Obviously, in the elementary, middle school, the park will be English, will be English ten and algebra one. But if you look at it, the graduation rate, the percent of students who graduate in four years and the percent of students who graduate in five years. So as part of the professional development plan, we would ask, you know, our teachers to really look hard at the students that are in their classes that are, are at risk. And another indicator that will measure school accountability is chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is a measure of students, whether they're in school or unexcused or unexcused. It's just not being in the seat. And it's eight, it's eight, ten percent of the school year, which would be eighteen days. So again, we're trying to align a professional development plan with what's expected from the federal government. We also included the response to intervention. We currently have in place INRS committees to help students that are at risk and there's an INRS committee in every school. But with the RTI, this will be part of the CUSAC regulation for 2018, 2019 going forward. So we wanna make sure that we put tier one, tier two and tier three interventions in place, so that will be part of the professional development plan. And you will see in the spring, we'll train our kindness counselors, our administrators, and we also start to work with our K one and two, so we can start with our earliest learners. And finally, we wanna continue with the, the strides we're making with the PLCs. And finally, we want to continue with the strides we're making with the PLCs, and we want to maybe expand them into the elementary school. I know right now, at Hoboken Stevens Institute, we have a group of eleven ambassadors in science education that are going to turnkey in their schools, next-generation science standards in New Jersey, student learning standards for science, so they will come back and, we will have PLCs from them in the elementary school. We also have PLCs on our abbreviated session dates. And the goal of the PLC is really to look at student achievement, it's not really a meeting to talk about discipline or homework, it's to really look at data. So I did share this with you, I know Dr. Wanko sent it home, we worked closely as cabinet to put this together, and we're hoping that you would approve this this evening.
Dr. Degnan, what's the number of days absent for a student before he or she might lose credit for the school year?
In the high school?
Yes.
I think it's twelve days in high school, I think you get a four or ten in a twelve-day letter, twelve days, so like, on thirteen days, there would be a review.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking review, I remember we do any attendance, and if they had more than a certain amount of days, they would lose credit for the school year. So then they would have to have a review and have medical excuses for anything over and above twelve days.
I would also bring attention to item two A, as part of high school graduation rate, I want everybody to, to be clear, the current freshmen, if you look on item two A, and this is big, which would be the class of 2021, there's two eligible pathways for a diploma. The first pathway, in English language arts, is to take and pass ELA ten, and in mathematics, it's take and pass PARC Algebra One. So you see the stress that, you know, we have on the ninth graders now, but there are no alternate, alternate pathways. So it says right here, they must meet the criteria of the NJ DOE portfolio appeal. So if our ninth graders do not pass ninth grade PARC, and they pass the Algebra One course, we have to provide opportunities for them to pass that test. Okay, so that, that's something we're going to have to think about as a curriculum committee going forward with the high school graduation rate. But the SAT, the PSAT, the ACT Replacer, the ASVAB Military Test are no longer options for our freshmen. And I did include an item from the, the Chief of Office of Assessives, item two B, that talks about what we're going to have to do with our freshmen that pass. I know, I do thank the board that we had the opportunity to provide the PARC this summer with the credit recovery program, and seventy students did take the test. Now, I don't have the scores back yet, but that would be a blessing if a lot of those students did pass, and they would be eligible for the diploma. So that, that's what I have on the professional development plan. Any questions on the...
I like all the, all the plans, I'm, I'm very excited actually about number three, the RTI program.
Yeah, RTI will definitely be in CUSAC. Now, we're going through CUSAC this year, seventeen, eighteen, however, going forward, it will have to be in the reg, so we will have to move in that direction. And it is good, Joe, it starts out with the intervention should take place in the classroom, and then move to ultimately progress monitoring.
And I think the earlier the better, I think too many times it's just too late, a little too late was the major problem, I, I really excited about that though.
Just briefly, in the area of staff training, I did give you a lot of the resolutions this evening for September 29th, November 7th, March, you saw them, they're paid out of two A. We have the science, English, math, social studies, pre-K will be doing, high schools, Title I will be working on Dibbles, which is for dyslexia training. Next big item, if I draw your attention to, would be item number three, it's our goals. Pull that out of your burgundy folder. And I'd like to thank all the board members that did contribute to the board's goals with your emails and sending us back suggestions and ideas, and working closely with our superintendent and cabinet, I think Dr. Wanko, that we did have an opportunity to take all your information for your goals, and I think we came up with three quality board goals. The first goal was to increase transparency between the Board of Education committees. So we do know we have the finance, negotiation, curriculum, and personnel, and we do have our meetings. However, sometimes we don't have an opportunity to really talk about what went on in those meetings. So what we want to do now is, we want to make, put this as our goal, that every month when we have our workshop, that chairman of that committee should report out to the other groups, and that's a goal that you created, and I think that's, that's a good goal for transparency. Our board goal number two would be responsibility with regard to fiscal stability and accountability. We will start our training on zero-based budgeting, you had, from Mr. DeLusha, gave us some information on zero-based budgeting tonight, so you're starting on your goal right now. And he's also going to give you some information regarding board secretary's reports, and that's will lead to our, our budget book, and approve, a timely budget approved in the spring. So again, I thank you for donating some information, that you wanted some training on fiscal accountability and responsibility. And ultimately, I know there was some questions from the board about getting Chromebooks and getting more technologically savvy, and there were different comfort levels, levels. What we want to do is give you a Chromebook and let you have the access, not email, but Mr. Vogel and his team could train you in Google Drive, or any of the apps that come with our Google, we are a Google district, that maybe you want to share presentations with one another or work in the drive. So our three goals are proficiency, transparency, and what was the other one? Responsibility. Again, I wonder if anybody would have any comments on the questions, either the ones that you created, but we helped put together for you with Dr. Wanko's support.
Oh, I could...
Good, because we're up against the clock.
Briefly, I'll just give you our district goals, and they mimic what we just talked about. Again, the first goal, student achievement, the second goal is communications, we talked about the digital backpack and digital briefcase, and the last goal would be the chronic absenteeism, which we just spoke about. And with respect to Genesis and eDoctrine, as Dr. Wanko said, we are in agreement with the functionality of the Genesis and edoctrine, and we will have them in September to do a presentation.
Thank you again. All right, Mr. Smith and I completed our facilities tour this week, we've been reviewing the facility concerns with Mr. Kubert. We also have updates and proposals to provide food for students. If you remember, I brought this up at the last meeting, I wanted to have a program where we could provide food for weekends and holidays for our, our students. Mr. Smith will give us an update on that, as well as the prescription plan and long-range facility plan.
Right, let me get right to the prescription plan, we have Tamesha Smith from Fabu here to give us an update on the progress in the timeline of our change in prescription plan. Tamesha, would you give us the Cliff North version at the lecture net, please? Thank you.
Okay, oh, great. Good evening, thank you so much for having me here this evening, I just want to say that, that the, working with the administration, the business administrator's office, finance office, personnel, and working with Brian has been tremendous in us moving forward, so I'm pleased to announce that we have maintained our implementation timeline. So we've received all of the documents, we did an electronic enrollment, so no employees had to fill out enrollment forms, so that was accomplished, and again, that was thanks to your Personnel Department. We also sent out member communications, those went out approximately between the fifth and seventh of August, and then ID cards went out yesterday, so employees should be receiving their ID card packet by the end of this week. And then they'll also be receiving an additional packet for an additional program that is provided by ProAct, the pharmacy company, for a mail order program, that's in addition to what's already being provided, a mail order program for a brand-name drug. So if there's anyone also still taking brand-name drugs, they can actually get those drugs for an, for a year's supply at a zero co-pay. So that went over well, very well at the city, and that mailing will be coming out. So we do have a date to see the teachers, which is on Friday, September 8th, but we are readily prepared for September 5th through the 8th, so if there are any additional days, we'll be able to come on those days as well. Mr. Smith did provide us a list of pharmacies that he wanted to make sure were in the network. All of the pharmacies, I'm glad to say, are in the network except for one, A1 Pharmacy, which is actually closed. So they are, do not participate because they're closed, and I think we also heard the name Hadako.
Hadako.
That, yes, pharmacy is in the network, and we have some members from the city that are already prepared to use that pharmacy. A fax blast did go out to all of the major pharmacies, including the local ones, letting them know that the Board of Ed members will be utilizing their pharmacy as of, as of September 1st, and they had a sample of the ID card, so we let them know, you know, so when they'll be able to see this, September 1st, they'll be coming in with their new ID card. And as we indicated previously, members do not need to, all they have to do is show up on the September 1st with their new ID card, whatever prescriptions they already have on file, or those same prescriptions on file. Any person that was maybe of a high-risk case on specialty medication, Mr. Smith made us aware of them, and they've already been reached out to, so that there will be no disruption, especially with specialty medications as well. So all these communications have gone out, and we do expect that they'll have their ID cards by the end of the week, and again, no enrollment forms were needed, so Susan Priscilla's office was tremendous, as well as the rest of the administration. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Yes.
Thank you, Tamesha, we'll be in touch all week, all right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Leading up to the...
And another thing, I just have to say, one last thing, that you guys are so prudent and so smart, as Brian said earlier, because of the increase for the state health benefits plan at thirteen percent, this is a tremendous savings for you guys, because now with that increase, now you're actually fifteen percent lower than the state health benefit plan when it comes to your prescription, which is a tremendous savings for the administration as well as the employees. Brian also indicated that the state is changing their prescription plan as of January 1st, 2018, so I know Mr. Smith did get a few calls from retirees, and at the time, we told him there was no change to them. However, with the state changing their prescription vendor, those retirees, you know, will face that change that the state is doing, but that has nothing to do with the Bayonne Board of Ed. So again, you guys made a great decision, and we're proud to be working with you, so thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have the need for subs, and we don't have enough coverage. We've been looking at the different ways to address this problem. Mr. Lopez and I met with some people to review best practices. We expect instruction to go on when the student comes into class every day, whether the teacher happens to be absent or not. We also expect instruction to go on the day before a holiday, or the day that might be a half-day, and we're going to work very hard to ensure that happens. So Mr. Lopez is going to present the brief summary of what we've done so far, but more importantly, our plans moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. As discussed in the last few meetings, our struggles with filled classrooms when teachers are out, as Dr. Wanko said, we've been meeting with different companies and looking at programs and best practices throughout the state. We've had companies come in and present to central office, we also had two companies who are probably the two largest, management come in and present to the Personnel Committee, I did email those presentations to the board, some highlights of those meetings, programs and companies have committed that they would save us over a hundred thousand dollars a year by using their system. Also, they would hire all of our current subs, recruit locally to hire local candidates and hire candidates that we recommend. Also, if we don't like a substitute, we will not be back in that district, so we are not losing control, we are in full control if we move to one of these systems. And by moving to one of these companies to daily substitutes, our pool of substitutes would grow, we would receive AESOP program, which we discussed for free, that we wanted to purchase, and now, and most importantly, our building principals would have ownership of the process of assigning daily substitutes to their building, which is very, very important to us. We'll be asking the companies to come to present to the entire board at our September board meeting, and we look forward to coming, to, to speed with everyone else in the state. It's 2017, we know we need to make the change, we need to get better, and we feel the system will take a stand, so that's my hat, Dr. Wanko.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, the cabinet put together a very robust agenda for our administrative team that will be here on Monday. We're looking forward to a very exciting and productive school year. There will be a lot of changes, there will be a lot of people moving out of their comfort zone, but everything will work out in the end, so I thank you for your kind attention this evening, that concludes my report.
Hey, trustees, at this time, we're going to go to the head table.